Good evening. Tonight's meeting of the Everett School Committee on Monday, June 7th will come to order. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Weston?
Mr. Abraze?
Here.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardello?
Here.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Here.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Ms. Dinah Lewis?
Here.
Parker?
Here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
We have all 10 members present, please, flute the flag. Please flute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Superintendent, next item, please.
Thank you. I have Roman numeral, oh, so Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from May 17th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Okay, motion is made in second to accept the minutes and place on file. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, send the affirmative. You have accepted the records. Item number, Roman numeral four, Madam Superintendent, well, Roman numeral four is public comment. Do we have anybody in the line for public comment? I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to open public comment.
All right.
Oh, second.
Uh, motion is made in second to open up a public comment. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, telling you from zero to negative, we have opened up for public comment. Do we have anybody in the queue?
We do not have anyone in queue right now.
Okay, no one's in the queue. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion is made in second to close public comment. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, sending the affirmative, zero to negative, to close public comment. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Parker, and hello to everyone here and all of you watching at home. Item number one of Roman numeral five is the superintendent's update. As was the case during our last meeting, tonight's update is highlighted by the class of 2021. We did hold a series of events for our class of 2021 last year, last week, and those events continue into this week. And then we will also be providing the highlights of our free summer academic and enrichment programming for all of our students from K through 12. But to begin our COVID slide, so we're not quite at the stage where we feel comfortable in removing this from our update, but we do believe that we're moving in the right direction. So this chart does show that our daily incidence rate, this next chart, sorry, shows that our daily incidence rate and percent positivity continues to plunge. In fact, Everett is now judged to be in the green or a low-risk community according to the state and CDC metrics. So at this stage, our overall approach to the pandemic, you know, is focusing on vaccine efforts. So in recent weeks, we have partnered with organizations such as the Cambridge Health Alliance, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Harvard Pilgrim, and the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center on bringing vaccine clinics directly to our schools. This past Friday and Saturday, in fact, the mobile Pfizer clinics were set up near Glendale Park. The Pfizer vaccine, as you know, is approved for everyone ages 12 and up and has obvious added value to our school communities. So I just wanted to thank everyone in our entire community and all of these organizations for being so quick to help organize these events for our residents, our families, and our students. This slide shows the number of cases we have reported among students 19 and under in the city of Everett. So we did see a modest spike in cases in April as we opened up schools for full-time in-person teaching and learning. The number of cases in this, in this age group, however, I am happy to report, did drop to 40 cases in May, which is a big decline from the previous month and significantly fewer than at the turn of the year. So as we make our way to the end of the school year, we will continue to require face coverings inside our schools for students and staff. They are not required for outdoor activities. Obviously, everyone is free to wear face coverings whenever they want, and we should all continue to be mindful that people will all adjust to the change in guidance and rules at their own pace. And so we are trying to encourage that no one should be made to feel uncomfortable about the choices they're making. Our latest attendance report shows that the large majority of our students are attending school, 90-plus percent of the time, with 829 students still boasting a perfect 100% figure. Our daily absences jumped a little as we moved from a mostly remote model to large-scale in-person learning. And there is a tendency for absences to tick up as the end of the year approaches as well. But even so, our attendance rates have once again leveled off over the last couple of weeks as students have settled into their new routines. So the next few slides highlight the events from last week for the class of 2021, which are among some of the brightest of the bright spots we've gotten to share this year. So the events gave our students the chance to be with each other and their teachers and to experience some measure of what is supposed to make this last part of their senior year so special. I do want to thank everyone at Everett High School who organized and oversaw our senior week festivities. Events like these, I know, are not easy to plan under any circumstances, but this year was definitely challenging because it was, you know, quite the sprint as our high schools were not given the go-ahead to return to in-person teaching and learning until May. So our EHS leaders and teachers had to, you know, really make sure that they were working diligently to get these events in place. But they saw an opportunity, they seized it, they put together a variety of fun schedule of events. And at the same time, we're also administering MCATs, access testing, and holding capstone presentations, all of which the staff handled with a lot of skill and dexterity. So our first event of the week was at, was a luau at the Cowloon Restaurant, which was organized by Maureen De Biaso. The following day, on June 2nd, seniors were treated to the Chicken and Rice Guy's food truck and an ice cream truck, which you see on this next slide. And then followed that night by that night's virtual EHS talent showcase. And then on June 3rd, seniors participated in a sunrise event at Everett Stadium. So they were all up very early that morning to participate in that. And then finally, on Friday, we held the red carpet extravaganza at the high school. One senior told us that, and I quote, "We all have felt seen this week after months being stuck at the house for over a year. I was glad people were able to notice us again." And then I had another student who said to me that this, that this last week of events, you know, had, you know, was a wonderful week and had kind of made up for a lot of what they've had to go through this past year. And while I appreciate that sentiment, I know it would take much more to do that, but I did appreciate how grateful all of our students were to be able to be together and to be celebrated in this way. We are excited about the release of our professional development and training course catalog, which is available to all EPS personnel. Teachers can review and register for all the courses via Teach Point, which is our online service that manages and tracks our professional development. The courses are a mix of in-person, virtual, and hybrid. So we will be leveraging those that, those models next year as well. Several will be held over the summer, while others will be held during afternoons and weekends of next school year. I think, you know, most important is the fact that we curated the courses based on a very comprehensive survey that we sent out earlier in the spring asking for input on course offerings, themes, topics, and enrichment and improvement from our educators. In many cases, we were looking to our staff to, not just on their input on what should be provided, but on actually providing the content themselves. So a total of 17 of our teachers are leading courses that are in this catalog in areas where they have demonstrated excellence, such as instructional technology, integration, supporting our English learner, small group instruction, arts methods for art teachers, just to name a few. We also tried to be creative and engaging, and to that end, we have two courses that are being taught by soon-to-be EHS graduates, Marta Pierre and Niri Matias, who will teach courses on the modern history of Haiti and Guatemala respectively. So these two talented students will use memoirs and nonfiction texts, as well as their own personal experiences and anecdotes and family stories to help teachers gain perspective on two areas of the world where many of our students come, come from. So these courses are in line with our goal to empower our students and to help teachers gain cultural competencies that we believe align with our student population. And this was also one of the items that was requested by our educators when they filled out the surveys, to be able to have more of these courses to learn about the homelands of their students. We are excited to announce the details of our free in-person summer program for students entering kindergarten through eighth grade. So the summer session, which is being staffed by our EPS teachers and coaches, will run from July 6th to August 6th. Lunch will be provided daily. And again, there is absolutely no cost to families, so we encourage as many students as possible to sign up. The complete schedule of classes and camps, as well as registration forms, will be available starting tomorrow on the EPS website, and information will be going out from school leaders. We have slots for more than 1,200 students, and there are no prerequisites of any kind. Our family liaisons will also be reaching out to families in the coming days to help parents with the signup process, and we're holding information sessions as well via Zoom. So we will have two sessions each in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. To tell you a little bit more about the program itself, the summer of 2021 will be offered at the Parlin, the Lafayette, Caverion, and Whittier schools. So this is a departure from the past when the district only offered summer programming at one site. Our overall objective this year is for students to, to reengage and to reconnect and to have fun. So we want to support the academic and social and emotional development of our students, and we think the best way to do this in the immediate term is to reconnect with them with their peers and their teachers, you know, so that they can enjoy themselves, you know, socialize, learn, and play games, sports, and participate in enrichment. So the academic portion of the summer program will be held from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. We will offer meaningful units on math, reading, and science. These classes will be led by our teachers, so they are aligned with our curriculum and our expectations. Throughout the five-week window, we've also lined up an array of activities that finally, families can sign up for as well, all of which reflect the broad interests of our students and also the talents of our staff. So our Crimson Tide coaches will lead sports camps and fitness programs. We will have yoga classes, arts and crafts, painting. There's a chess course that's on the menu, book clubs, and several different music offerings. So these will be offered in the afternoon after the academic program, and we are offering flexibility for families. So parents can sign up for the academic program only, or they can choose to send their student to as many of the enrichment camps as the schedule allows. So for families who are interested in academic and enrichment, it is important to remember that the different offerings are going to be available at different schools and locations. And so that will be the one kind of limitation, is different programs will be offered at different locations. So families may want to choose their location based, for example, on the enrichment opportunities that are provided at that school in the afternoon. For our other summer programming, our Special Education Department annual extended school year, as they usually do at the Madeline English School and the Webster School. So this is a fun and essential program that is overseen by our special ed director, William Donahue, and that provides academic support according to the goals and benchmarks of a student's individualized education plan. We also are holding the Devon School Summer Session, which will run Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. beginning June 21st. So it's actually an extension of the school year and ends on July 15th. So the program will emphasize students' social-emotional development, while approximately two hours per day will actually be allotted for academic instruction. The staff are also arranging for students to participate in many experiences that are not typically offered during the school year, such as gardening, farming, hiking. They'll be going on walking field trips and tours to museums, state parks, zoos, and so on. At Everett High School, we are planning a series of summer offerings for students that include an enrichment academy for learning. So this academy will run from July 6th to August 7th and is designed to give students the opportunity to maintain or to recover any learning routines that were impacted by COVID-19, as well as to provide an enriching learning experience that will utilize local partnerships and our community resources. The English Learners Department is offering remote credit recovery and Project REED programs. So the credit recovery is an option for students to recover credit for the 2020-2021 school year, and it will be offered from June 29th through July 29th. And it will feature a blend of synchronous and asynchronous time to support students that work over the summer or have family obligations. The Project REED program will be led by certified teachers who will deliver lessons on phonics and literacy development. So the program targets students with limited or interrupted education in their home language and are Level 1 or Level 2 of English language development. This program will be held from July 6th through August 27th, Monday through Thursday, for one hour per day for three separate cohorts. In partnership with ZoomX, the EL department will also be offering a STEAM enrichment program that's for all levels of English learners and grade levels to meet the needs of students who will benefit from foundational skill building. So ZoomX will allow students to engage in the arts and will offer workshops on songwriting, African drumming, vocals, radio drama, and build-it-construction-oriented classes. The STEAM program will run from June 28th to July 29th, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 to 12:00. For rising ninth graders, we will be offering an acceleration program through our partnership with Livius, who is a provider with a proven track record for boosting student achievement and test scores. So participants will be taking a pre-assessment test, followed by 10 sessions on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The program features a 5:1 student-teacher ratio and can accommodate English learners as well. EHS students can also participate in the Virtual Prisms of Reality Algebra program. So this partnership between Prisms and the EPS involves the implementation of an algebra library to provide administrators and educators with a platform to improve algebra proficiency. EHS is also partnering with the Boston Design Academy to offer internship to our students centered around urban gardening and 21st century technology and helping address food insecurity in Everett. And lastly, the high school is offering a summer youth academy for rising ninth graders in partnership with the Three Point Foundation. So this free program, summer program, is integrating project-based learning, athletics, and other activities that promote learning and develop skills. Following Wednesday's graduation, EHS staff will be begin sharing information about this very long menu of items that students can choose from for the summer, including registration links and virtual and in-person information sessions. So as you can see, we really have tried to create a robust amount of summer programming that will, you know, appeal to all different students and families, depending on what they want their summer to look like. We really are, again, trying to really diversify the experiences and access and opportunity that we're providing to our students, and we believe that the summer will just be a preview of what we plan to do for after-school programming next year. Finally, we are thrilled about the Everett High School graduation ceremony, which is scheduled for this Wednesday, June 9th at 6:00 p.m. inside the Everett Stadium. So our graduates will be in caps and gowns, seated with each other, just as we would want them to be. You know, we can't fill the voids that this year created for our students or, you know, go through with all the traditions that were denied of our seniors, but we are very excited that the members of the class of 2021 and their loved ones will be able to enjoy, you know, the pomp and circumstance of a traditional graduation ceremony. The graduation ceremony will be streamed live on YouTube and will be on local cable television for those who cannot attend. I did also want to highlight some exciting work our ESL department and family liaisons are doing in the way of parent and community outreach and enrichment. So the EPS is utilizing what is called a Title III 186 immigrant grant to offer six free English language literacy and reading classes to parents and guardians. So the Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole courses were developed by our team based on the direct feedback from our English learner parent advisory councils, or our LPACs. So the sessions will be a mix of in-person, Zoom, and hybrid options to meet the diverse preferences of our community. In addition, classes are available in the morning and in the evenings. Registration is being completed by our family liaison team, and there will be slots available for some sections and waitlist slots available for others, which can be accessed through the homepage of the EPS website. Additionally, we are also offering three sections of, sections of family Spanish literacy classes for parents and guardians and their children who are entering grades K through 2. So this was actually in response to the repeated request from our Spanish-speaking families to help their children develop Spanish literacy skills. So in this class, students will actually practice Spanish speaking, reading, and writing by creating a family photo and memory album, and all materials are included in the course. In addition, all the students will receive a small Spanish-English bilingual book library to take home. And these classes will be taught by our Spanish-speaking family liaisons beginning in July. And for more information for anybody who wants it, they should please either visit our website or reach out to any of our family liaisons. And that brings me to the conclusion. If anybody has any questions, they'll take them now.
Sarni?
Thank you. On the after-school, the summer program, we have four new schools that we're introducing. You mentioned, do we have enough teachers? And how many in a classroom?
So yes, we actually are having it at three more schools. So normally, we only have it at one school, but now we'll be having it at three additional, so four sites in all. But again, we also have Programming ESY at two of our other schools. We have the extended year at the Devon School, and then we have a lot of programming happening at the high school as well. We did develop, part of the reason that it's taken us a bit of time to get this menu of offerings out is because we were working on getting the staff first. I'm not sure if people have heard, but districts are having quite a bit of trouble recruiting staff for the summer. So we wanted to make sure that we had the staff in place first before we provided access to the opportunities. Our current leadership right now that we're looking at is 15 to 1. And, but again, for some of the different courses, it'll actually be less than that. So for example, I mentioned one where it's 5 to 1, and so it really is dependent too on what the program is.
Okay, thank you. And we haven't, family signed up, have you seen that happening now yet?
Tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. First, a comment, I'm so excited about the additional offerings for PD, but most about the students leading that, that's something that we've heard from our youth, and that just really made me proud, and kudos to those students for stepping up to do that. It's pretty brave to be the teacher. But a question I wanted to ask about some clarification on the attendance data now that we're back in person. So my understanding is that, and this is by DESI, not the district, if a student is enrolled to be in-person and they're logged in remotely, they are marked absent. Is that correct?
So no, they're not marked absent. They, if they, if they come to class, they'll be marked virtually present.
Okay.
So they may be an in-person student who, for that day, is marked virtually present, and how that's going to actually impact, you know, overall record-keeping and accountability, we're unsure of right now because there is some nuance there. But yes, I know that that's something that people have been worried and asking about, so it's virtually present.
I know with like the weather these next few days, a few people have asked, but it was unclear about whether you would be absent, even if you were virtually present. So I appreciate that clarification, and I was wondering what the impact on those statistics that you show us weekly, if that had any impact as well, but thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Lewis?
Um, do you have any idea, like, if the summer programs have the same schedule? Like, if a student is able to apply for more than one, if they wanted to?
Oh, that is a great question. So a lot of them, like I mentioned, some are running at different times. So there are some that our students could take both of because some of them happen maybe two days a week versus others that are happening four days a week. It is a little bit of a puzzle, though, so that actually brings up a good point that when we put out registration for our high schoolers, we'll make sure that it is very clear what the time slots, what the time ranges are, so that students can know, you know, if they could pick multiple options, which ones those would be.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent, this is very exciting. It's excellent. And Mike, you mentioned briefly in your presentation, but if you could mention again, because I miss it, how we're going to inform our parents and students about this, this program, especially because, you know, it's going to be more schools, there will be different programs. Is that like the, each principal, we will contact, are we sending emails, are we calling, like, how are we doing that?
So we're going to be doing all of the above. We're going to be kind of rolling it out a little bit at a time. So for different programs, we'll start in different ways. But, so for example, the K-8 programs, they will be hearing from their school leaders, but it will be translated. Then the family liaisons will also be reaching out to their network of families. And then we're also going to ask that teachers too, in the time that is remaining, that they push out the information as well. At the high school, we will be doing something similar, but also for those programs, since some of them are targeted specifically to certain student populations, we'll be able to target that communication a little bit more. So for example, the programs that are specifically for ninth graders will be sent to those students, those families, those that are specifically for English learner students will be, will be supported by those classes. And then also, family liaisons can reach out to those families as well.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned about the Three Point Foundation, which I know them extremely well. I've done a lot of work with them through my other job. And what kind of program they're going to run here?
So they are running a program with our ninth graders. The, let's see, sorry. So it's going to integrate project-based learning, athletics, and other activities. So they're going to kind of have a sort of all-encompassing, multidisciplinary program for the ninth grader specifically.
Got it. They, they are fantastic. All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions of the superintendent's update? Seeing none, do you want to move on?
Yes, absolutely. So item number two for Roman numeral five is the, my entry findings report for my new superintendent induction program. So, um, as I I mentioned earlier. You to myself. So as I mentioned earlier this year, um, I am a member of the new superintendent induction program. Um, and earlier this year, I submitted a formal entry plan, uh, to the school committee and to the community um, in late twenty twenty. So this report is detailing the findings of this comprehensive and, um, very ambitious process. It is meant to bring focus and clarity, uh, to the work that we need to undertake as a district. Um, and it also sort of represents the end of my transition into the superintendent position um, and the beginning of the next phase in the evolution of the Everett Public Schools, as well as my the next phase of, um, my work here. So I I came to Everett after nineteen years as an educator and administrator. So that did give me, you know, time and experience to formulate my core values and my overall philosophy about how a successful urban district should function. Uh, but the past fifteen months have given me, you know, an invaluable opportunity to adjust and kind of mesh those thoughts based on the unique aspects of the Everett Public Schools. So I've identified quite a few strengths, uh, that stand on their own and then other areas of growth that do need to be supported and expanded. Um, I've also discovered areas that, you know, may need just a little bit of light editing versus areas that perhaps might need to be rewritten altogether. So this report includes several, uh, essential data findings, and it also represents just a narrative of my overall listening tour. I had countless, um, invaluable conversations with staff at our schools across all grade levels and subject areas, as well as other stakeholders that are external to the school system, um, students as well, uh, school committee members. And so I just want to thank everyone that I talked to for their thoughtfulness and for showing me, um, all of the different vantage points to which we should be looking at at student education. So, um, the crux of the the report really is that we're confronted with great challenges, but with even greater opportunity. And so, um, it is my very great honor to be in a position to be able to foresee this effort. So on this next slide, you will see, um, our core values, which are familiar at this point. Uh, you know, they are sort of the framework, uh, that I use, and I'll not spend too much time on them since we have discussed them several times during the past year in various contexts. Context, but it is important to briefly just reiterate them here as I have aligned my entry findings repeatedly to these four tenants. So integrate, when we talk about integrating, we're specifically talking about the need to ensure that our content areas and our learning experience, uh, experiences for our students are resulting in authentic and meaningful learning experiences for EPS students. So for example, our summer programming offerings are an attempt at, you know, bringing that authenticity into summer. Uh, to access, so this extends across all levels of the EPS from students and families to our teachers and staff. So during my listening and learning tour, access of everything, um, was definitely brought up from high-quality and expanded programming for students to really top-notch professional development for our staff, um, which are themes that came up repeatedly. Um, empowering is just about us fostering collaborative relationships among principals, teachers, students, and families in order to promote the excellence that we we believe everyone deserves. Uh, and this starts with creating a positive and professional climate and permanently ending certain past practices and mindsets. Finally, cultivate, um, is ultimately that we are charged with creating a safe and welcoming environment in which our students can grow and thrive and be heard. Uh, we want to cultivate strong and dynamic relationships within the Everett Public Schools, but also among our parents and schools and the entire community at large. So my entry plan included three phasing, three phases. Um, up first was the engaging and understanding, which reflects my listening and learning tour and the meetings that I held with members of the EPS community, either individually or in small groups. The second phase, since synthesizing and strategizing involves the categorization and prioritization of all the information I gathered during that tour, uh, which you will see here today. So this was a deliberate process in which all of the comments, concerns, compliments were given, uh, due consideration. The last phase is alignment and implementation during which, um, you know, me and my team are in a continuous process of connecting, um, what I am hearing, uh, with our budget priorities, our overall district-wide strategies and initiatives. So, uh, the alignment and implementation phase is to make sure that all of the work that we're doing is always reflective of this feedback that we are getting. So in the strictest sense, you know, all three of the phases of the entry process are complete. I did finish my listing and learning tour and worked, you know, to collate and summarize the findings. Um, I also used what I learned to inform the budget investment plan and the fiscal year twenty-two budget, both of which have been approved by the school committee. So while, uh, you know, COVID nineteen definitely definitely presented numerous challenges from operational and time management perspectives, um, it that definitely impacted my listening and learning tour too, but I was able to forge ahead and and meet the major benchmarks of this critical project, even if I would have preferred to have some of those meetings in person and they had to happen over Zoom. So my meetings, all of which were anonymous, have been held individually or in small groups. I held a total of a hundred and seventy-two meetings from January of twenty twenty of last, so that's last year, um, with more meetings scheduled this week. As again, this process is not one that I intend to have an end date. Um, I do want this to be a continuous process because I have found it to be so valuable. Staff members made up a large percentage of the people that I spoke with, but the list also included students, parents, vendors and partners, public officials, city employees, representatives from civic groups and community organizations. So it was a very good cross-section that helps me kind of see things from multiple perspectives and consider different ways to approach, uh, potential solutions. By far, I think that my most important objective in this listening and learning tour was achieving honesty. I did want people to feel free to speak openly, and they did. Um, of the unquestionable strengths that I've inherited here and, um, comfort and having difficult conversations was not necessarily among them. So in this sense, I felt like the the learning tour was actually a success unto itself because I feel like it did signal to staff that they can express themselves without fear of any kind of reprisal. So we do have work to do, but I do believe that our district climate and culture is brightening. So this slide shows you how I distilled or coded all of the feedback that I received. So the thoughts, ideas, and suggestions, observations demanded a lot of analysis to kind of give them shape and perspective. So as you can see here, I put responses into large but kind of manageable list of categories. Uh, the categories I hope hope are straightforward, um, and cut across every major component of a public school district. So this chart reflects more than two hundred responses, um, all of which represent opportunities for growth. So the most popular theme was definitely district culture, uh, which is clearly has to be central for immediate planning ahead for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Um, I also wanted to call your attention to the next three categories, which were student opportunities, equitable services, and enhanced curricula, which generated a total of seventy-one responses. So I was, um, impressed with the array of views that people expressed on how to better serve our students and the the solutions they brought to the table. Uh, the range of themes, uh, revealed a lot of what, you know, I'd already heard to be true. Um, that is that we have to be very deliberate deliberate about every strategic decision that we make, um, as each one is going to impact many of these areas. So for example, if we're implementing a smart training opportunity, um, that can represent growth in the areas of curriculum and equity and student opportunity, or something that addresses the theme of clear responsibilities could easily have a positive domino effect on communication and efficiencies. Um, again, I owe a debt of gratitude to each and every person who spoke to me honestly and candidly, and I am compelled to caution anyone against viewing the comments represented here as being complaints because they weren't. The individuals I talked to were incredibly constructive and positive, even when they made suggestions or cited areas for improvement. So if I were to, you know, bring one word to these conversations, I would I would call these conversations healthy. So this gives you a closer look at how I synthesized the feedback that I received into overarching recommendations and then how they aligned with the core values. So these recommendations are diverse, but I suspect ones you would expect to see from this kind of process. Uh, one is about our fundamental need for more space. One deals with the brass tacks of teaching and planning, um, common planning time specifically. Uh, the third centers on equity, and the last one is about evaluation evaluation. So each one easily falls, uh, under one of our, if not more, of our core values. Um, here are another four suggestions or overarching comments, which give further evidence of the breadth and depth of the kind of feedback that I receive. Um, so the first two comments are definitely in the area of access. The first expressed a desire to develop more enrichment opportunities um, and differentiated tailored opportunities, um, and programs for middle school school students. Uh, the second, expressing the need for more community partnerships, is geared toward our older students. Third is a comment that is related to empowering our staff, one that touches on the need to delineate and articulate roles and responsibilities across all levels of the district. And then last, um, was a comment that I heard several times, which was lauding the district's diversity, which to me signaled this existing opportunity that we have to embrace and maximize, um, the multiculturalism and multilingualism that is the beauty of the Everett Public Schools. So of the comments and themes culled from the listening and learning tour, many fell along a very aspirational line. So, um, twenty-seven expressed the belief that our students and staff are our biggest asset. Uh, several of these respondents also stated that they were thrilled to be working in Everett. Uh, teachers were also very complimentary of each other. Um, it is clear that our educators make time for one another and value all different, um, you know, roles within the school building that support our students. And I think all of this kind of serves as a reminder that we are not talking about an endless list of fixes and changes. There are many strengths to to tap into, um, and things that just need to be amplified so they make a larger impact across the district. There were also many comments that indicated that our district culture is already improving and that the EPS is demonstrating demonstrating, um, improved efficiency. So I was thrilled to receive this feedback as it does show that we are forging ahead and that members of our school community are seeing positive results in the moment. So the final phase of the process is alignment and implementation. Um, as I said earlier, I incorporated as many of these findings into our budget priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. But this report should not be confused with a formal strategic plan, which is something that we will develop with the school and district leadership teams beginning, um, in June, actually. Um, I am reminded too of the advice that, you know, teachers often give to their students to make sure that you totally understand the question before you give an answer. So I think this process demanded that I really listen, ask questions, record information, and then repeat that exercise over and over again. Uh, if I could solve a problem on the spot or in short order, I definitely did. Uh, but I was careful not to rush to large-scale solutions until I understood every detail. Um, and also I definitely until I had, uh, received, uh, input from school leaders and from staff. So also, you know, with the harsh realities of COVID nineteen, um, enrolling entry findings in a strategic plan, uh, you know, seemed particularly burdensome or counterproductive to to roll all of those into one. So that's what we'll be launching next. Seventy-four comments actually fell under our empowerment core value, uh, which was followed close by access and cultivate. And I just thought that was interesting to bring up. Again, one shouldn't really view these values as silos, um, that need to be approached individually or demand singular solutions because they definitely do not. Uh, these are just connections to be made and answers that address multiple questions. So I said, I said in the outset, you know, I do find this to be very exciting. This is why we are here, uh, to build a world-class school district that meets the needs of our worldly student population. So it, um, you know, compiling the superintendent's entry report, uh, I do want to mention, was not disconnected from the daily operation of the Everett Public Schools, nor was it distinct from my own goals for myself for the school year. So on the contrary, in fact, I identified three chief objectives for myself at the beginning of the twenty twenty twenty-one school year, which are outlined here. So this is the exact same slide and that I wanted to report back to you. Um, first, I aim to make foundational changes to district operations that will promote transparency, streamline processes, and identify efficiencies to bolster student supports. I did meet this goal by assessing the financial health of the district and greatly retooling the budget process, starting with more input from our educators and school leaders. Um, I formed a talented and diverse leadership team and carefully crafted an organizational chart. I've intentionally addressed equity and inclusivity, which is perhaps best exemplified by the creation of our language-based English learner parent advisory committees. And the EPS has made significant investments in upgrading and utilizing technology. And this isn't just related to COVID nineteen demands, uh, but also essential investments that support equitable ass access to, uh, twenty-first century education. My second goal was to engage the EPS community in identifying the strengths and areas for improvement as we begin to kind of co-construct an inclusive and innovative future. So this is clearly reflected in the listening and learning tour that we just talked about at great length. Um, another action that I would single out is the revamping of our hiring process to make these processes more formal and inclusive. Uh, thirdly, I pledge to undergo the new superintendent induction program, which has definitely been an invaluable experience that has helped me develop and refine the skills that I need to lead the district. I have taken full advantage of, uh, the N C I P program on behalf of our students and staff. Um, and in similar light, I have identified some general goals for the upcoming years, ones that will leverage the advantages of being together again under traditional timelines and circumstances. So these you'll see on this next slide, um, which I will end with, that my entry findings clearly show, oh, here, sorry, next. Thank you. Uh, my entry findings, um, show that we do have to start with culture. Uh, we have made gains, um, but concerns do linger. Uh, still, as I have these these, uh, listening and learning tour meetings, uh, I have heard many comments from teachers and staff, um, about the way that the EPS has has operated in the past. Um, you know, things that are arbitrary arbitrary punitive actions, um, that again, I'd prefer not to go into, um, but I do appreciate the educators sharing them with me. And I think what's important about that is that these, you know, um, sort of remaining strands, uh, need to be removed from our district. So I do want our staff to be able to see a demonstrative change over a period of time. And when they do, we can all take great comfort in knowing that our work will be, you know, rooted exclusively in the needs of our students and families. So that doesn't mean I can remove all the bumps from the road, but I do pledge to make sure that we're at least pointed in the right direction. So as we head into the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, I wanted to prioritize reconnection, humanity, and dignity. So we spent the last year working collaboratively, but not to the degree that a traditional school year will actually afford us. Um, so we have this fantastic opportunity ahead of us to think about how central administration, for example, works with principals, how principals work with teachers, how teachers work with each other, and how we all work with our students. Second, uh, we need to increase access to services, academic opportunities, and enrichment opportunities for all of our students. Um, you know, this is never going to be achieved by a one-size-fits-all approach, and it does require creativity, ambition, and, you know, uh, that constant feedback loop. Lastly, and certainly not least, uh, we have to provide targeted training to our teachers so that we can address some of the learning loss, um, especially those that brought about by COVID nineteen. So we can't recoup the time that we lost this year, but we can certainly position ourselves to accelerate learning for all of our students in the next school year, uh, because our kids can't wait. That brings me to the end of the presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions of the superintendent on her, uh, entry plan or entry findings? Okay, seeing on, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Lambert?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Madam Superintendent. I I I know this is ongoing, um, work. So we did hear from a lot of students that there were a lot of things about this year that did work for them. And um, what what is the district looking at as opportunities to, you you know, just like we were talking about, being able to meet with a group of students remotely that we would never be able to get into a room on a Friday night? You know, um, opportunities like that, how can we leverage those and and look at the difference? Because it didn't work for every student, but it did work for some.
So yes, I think that that's going to be important part, important part of that year. Um, and I think that it's something that I've heard from many teachers is that they, you know, there are certainly, and not not just with, um, you know, the the actual instructional model, but a lot of the new instructional strategies that our our teachers have have, uh, gained this year, a lot of the new platforms that we had never used before. So there are a lot of things that will easily be translated into a new school year, but then there are many that we are going to need to make an extra effort in order to ensure that we're not just but then there are many that we are going to need to make an extra effort in order to ensure that we're not just falling back into old habits. I do think that, you know, the access of being able to meet remotely, while we don't ever want it to, replace that person-to-person contact certainly gives us a new way of looking at how we're going to be able to support our students moving forward. I'm sure that you have heard that DESI is requiring that students return to school next year. They will be providing remote academies across the state. But I don't think that that precludes us from being able to provide extra support to students, extra flexibilities to students. And so that's what we're really trying to figure out is the state puts out its guidance on what student learning time can look like and what will qualify, how we can work within those confines to still make sure we're being, we're able to provide extra access to students. Because again, now that we have sort of explored this new world, we should be able to leverage it in many different ways to be able to support our students, even if, you know, unfortunately, it may not always count for student learning time, which we hope it will, but we don't know that it will. So we are going to figure out what the guidance is and figure out what parts of this that we can really move forward with, moving forward. But I think that will be an ongoing discussion with educators as well about how that can look.
And I was going to say, if we could continue to reach out to our educators about what those opportunities might be, but also families, because, you know, there were certainly differences families saw in their students, both at home and then returning to school, and whether it was just adjustment or, you know, maybe they didn't go back this year. And there's going to be a transition, whether over the summer or in September, just to keep that door open. So I appreciate that access piece to your platform, as always.
And I also, in that same vein, one thing that I've heard very consistently from teachers is about the ability to engage with parents in a different way and families than they have in the past. So even as we are currently in discussions about a current, future contract negotiations, one of the conversations that we're having with school leaders is about, you know, the hybrid approach to parent engagement that we want to utilize moving forward, because we do believe that there was a lot of that that was really positive and that gave the families the flexibility that they need in their own working, busy lives in order to be able to still connect with their schools, with their educators, and be able to, you know, kind of keep abreast of what's going on.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you for that, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So item number three is a request to roll over the following contracts for the 2021-2022 school year. So those contracts are with Encore, which is the contract for fire alarm systems. It is the last year of a three-year contract. Richmond Plumbing, which is a contract for a plumbing company. It is the last of a three-year contract. Sanibel Electric, which is the contract for our electricians company. It is the last of a three-year contract. Homeless Transportation, this is the contract for the transportation of our students who are homeless, and it is the last of a three-year contract. And then Garden Street LLC, this is the contract for the lease of the garage space to house our vehicles, such as our snow blowers, lawn mowers, plow blades, and it is the second of a three-year contract.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to roll over the following contracts, and the second, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in front of zero and a negative, you have approved. The role over of those contracts is read. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number four is a request to go out to bid for the rental of a P A system. So where we are requesting to go out to bid for the leasing of a P A system on an as-needed basis for events such as graduation, athletic events, we are at the end of our current three-year contract and thus need to go out to bid.
I'll make a motion for favorable action.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion before us to favor elections in second, and any questions or comments that would, Mayor Di Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have we looked into how much a P A system would cost to buy?
Yes, I'm actually glad you were bringing that up because we are also looking into doing that instead. But we didn't want to, we want to have both options open to us. So in the case that we weren't able to purchase a P A system, we wanted to at least have the opportunity to go out to bid. But I think you're absolutely right. We've realized that there is definitely benefit to having one of our own. So we are certainly going to look into that and if we, and perhaps simultaneously go out to bid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the matter? Debate, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in the affirmative, you have approved the request to go out to bid for P A system. Next item, please.
So item number six is to request the approval of the elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief fund two grant in the amount of $5,996,292. So this supplemental funding opportunity is intended to help school districts safely reopen schools and to measure and effectively address the significant learning loss through one-time investments through June 30th of 2022, with extended periods of availability allowed up to September 30th of 2023.
Here's, we have number five, please.
Sorry, thank you. Item number five, which normally goes before six. Is a request to accept the donation of $2,100 in Amazon gift cards from the Everett Coannis Organization. So these gift cards were given out to the seniors at the Red Carpet Extravaganza on Friday, June 4th, 2021, and will also be continued to give out to the rest of the students we didn't get to see this upcoming week, which we thank them for so much.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of $2,100, and a lot of thanks to the Everett Coannis Organization.
I'll cycle on.
Okay, motion's been seconded for favorable action on the donation. Any questions to debate? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in the affirmative, you accepted the donation. Item number six, please.
Item number six is the request approval for the SR2 grant in the amount of $5,996,292.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so the motion before us has been seconded for favorable action. Any questions or comments? Mayor Di Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this money SR Grant Two, I take it?
Yes.
And do we, we have to, have to actually fill out a, not fill out, is it, is it not an automatic, but it just has just a protocol we have to follow just to get the money? Is that how it goes, or can you explain?
That is correct. And then we fill out the application that is due that will outline the different areas where we are going to spend the funds, many of which the group has already seen. But we will be bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions, this is Superintendent? If I can from the chair, do we have a status on SR Three?
Not. Would you, I can invite up CFO, I knew Jant, because I actually don't know if we have an update.
I'll make a motion to invite Ms. Giant.
I'll cycle on.
Okay, motion made in second to bring forward Ms. Giant. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray? Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in the affirmative, we get Ms. Giant before us.
Good evening.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah. So my question, Ms. Giant, was can you give us a status on SR Three with that stance? I mean, have we been awarded anything yet, or is there an estimated timeframe, anything to that matter?
Yes, the allocation has come out. I'll have to just dig a little here to get to the exact amount. But we are going to bring that forward after SR Two, because that has a little longer leeway before we have to submit an application. So it's about $14 million, but I'll get to the exact amount in a minute. Sorry, it might take a little more, longer than a minute. Can I come back, come back with that amount?
Actually, you know, about $14 million is good for me. I would just say in preparation for tomorrow's budget hearing, if you'd have that exact amount, because I'm sure that'll come up along with the, you know, the timeframe. And it's $14 million that we could use over a period of three years, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions of our CFO?
Excuse me, my customer, thanks.
Ashley, if she can hang around, because I believe there's going to be some other items later on the calendar that we can save some time by keeping her. Right, thank you so much. All right, so the motion made before us to accept the elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief fund in two, granting the amount of $5,996,292. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze? Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Tell you, one of the things you realize you missed during COVID was having a full house and being able to take roll calls that much easier, as opposed to who's here and who's remote. So thank you for that. Standing in front of zero and the negative, you have approved the matter, please. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number seven is a request to the city to review and provide a process to address delayed revenue postings for external funding. So what I'm asking for specifically is to submit a letter to the city specifically around this process because our revolving funds, we're currently waiting on a total of $1,786,402 to be posted to our books with transactions dating from January 5th to May 6th. With our grants, we are waiting a total of $2,860,388 with transactions here that have been sent as early as October 28th, 2020. Even when posted late, the posted date is backdated, so that shows up incorrectly, that it was posted at an earlier date when it in fact was not. And so the process does make it complicated for us. So we were hoping that the city treasurer's office could provide us with a formal process and timeline of dates that would be helpful in addressing this problem so that we can post our revenue in a timely manner so as to allow us to properly reconcile our books on an ongoing basis.
So moved.
I'll cycle on.
Motion's been seconded to request the city to review and provide a process to address delayed revenue postings for external funding. So Madam Superintendent, that amounts to approximately $3.6 million. Is this, is this stuff that we have encumbrances against?
I would actually defer to CFO Giant on that. I believe so.
Yes, so the process is that we are required to request funding on a monthly basis from the state for all our grants. And that request for reimbursement, it's a request for reimbursement, so it's based on expenses, the expenses that we've already put against those grants. So the revenue comes in from the state, it goes through the city treasurer's office, and is then supposed to be posted to, to the grant in a timely manner. So all our grant final reports are due by the end of this year. So it does make it harder for us to kind of reconcile our books on a monthly basis when the revenue is not coming in in a timely manner. And it will be a bigger problem, especially when we're filing our final reports at the end of the year.
Okay, and I'm sure just as you worked out the reimbursements on the PP earlier this year, you come to some conclusion working together. So with that, we have a motion before us to request the city to review and provide a process. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze?
I'm sorry. Mayor Di Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The CFO is here, if you want to invite him up. I'll make a motion to invite Mr. Dimas up, if I get a second.
Second, I'm motion.
Okay, the motion's been seconded to bring up Mr. Dimas. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows? Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in the affirmative. Welcome, Mr. Dimas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The superintendent is correct. The treasurer's office is behind and has been behind in their revenue postings. Prior to the pandemic, the treasurer's office always had their accounts and the revenues posted and reconciled by the 15th of the month. Unfortunately, the treasurer and collector's office have been hit hard with COVID throughout the year. We've had numerous employees that have gone out some multiple times. One, either they actually contracted this horrible disease, or two, they were forced to quarantine based upon the safety guidelines. These are our frontline employees. They're in, they're constantly working together. And when one would either test positive, we would have to quarantine everybody, even though we didn't have any office spread, we didn't have the COVID spread within the offices as a result of them being in there, but it was more outside of the work environment. We have had, the mayor did hire a firm to come in a couple of months ago, and they're getting close to getting back up to date, which I'm confident they will be able to remain up to date to assist with that process because it does create a number of issues, it certainly creates issues out of my office. Unfortunately, the auditor's office doesn't have the ability to assist the treasurer's office in some of these aspects, given the fact that the auditor's office controls the general ledger and handles all of the actual review of the postings and the actual postings themselves. So we had, we had to make sure that while we tried to get back up to date to assist the treasurer's office where we could, we had to make sure that we were fully embracing the internal controls and the segregation of duties so that you didn't have one department responsible for all aspects of the transaction cycle. So they are getting close, and I'm confident that once they get caught back up, that this will not be an issue moving forward. They'll be back on to having those postings done within 15 days of close of the prior month. In addition to that, I understand what the superintendent is saying in regards to the posting date is creating a little bit of confusion. But we are required to post the revenues when the city actually collected them and reconciled them. So that's what they're doing. The system is period-driven, not date-driven. So all of the transactions, you can still see the date it was actually posted, but when you're actually looking at the revenue reports, the revenue will show up in the appropriate month that the city actually collected it. So I'm confident that the treasurer's office is going to get there shortly, and hopefully we won't have any of these issues moving forward. and hopefully we won't have any of these issues moving forward in that office.
Any other questions, Mr. Demus? Mr. Abuzey, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, because what, I just was uncomfortable with the way this was presented in terms of request to the city to review. Mr. Demus, I believe, has pointed out that it's the treasurer's office, and now he's represented that the treasurer's office, this is because of COVID-19. So when we're saying request to the city, are we requesting the treasurer's office? Because it appears if that's the case, that Mr. Demus and the mayor are representing that there's a firm in there working right now to get this back on track. So it sounds to me as if we're all on the same page here, and we all want the same thing. So again, I'm not, it, it sounds like, although it's an important point, it sounds like it may be a moot point right now as to where we're at. Am I right, Mr. Demus? Am I right in that regard?
Yes, yes, you are, Mr. Abuzey. They should be up very, up to date very closely, and I'm confident again that as soon as they are up to date, that it's not going to be an issue to repeat itself. It is the treasurer's office, but it does fall under my purview as the chief financial officer. But under state statute, I'm not allowed as CFO and the city auditor to actually work in the treasurer's office because of that important segregation of duties. But I do work with them as best I can in a supporting role. And I am very confident that we're going to be up and running closely. And since I've been here, they've always been able to have those revenues posted again in, in the subsequent month. And I'm confident that as soon as we can get back up to date, that that will be the case moving forward.
Understood. I guess what I'm saying is based on Mr. Demus' representations, I'm not sure we have to go forward on this. That's just my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Demus. Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Demus, as well, for the presentation, the clarification. Is there a timeline? Because I'm sure if this is causing an issue for the schools, it's also causing an issue for other departments. And I know that you, you've mentioned that you are addressing these as fast as you can. Is there any timeline that you believe these in the next 30 days, the next 90 days, the next few months, or the next few weeks?
It, it is, the, the issues that it's creating for the school department are the same issues that it is creating for other departments. It's also creating a significant issue for the budget office in, in the auditor's office. Because as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, I'm trying to make calculations on where we're going to end up with free cash. So it is having an impact on us. I've been told, I get updates on this on a weekly basis. I've been told by the consultants as well as our treasurer, collector, that we should be back to full force and up to date within the next 60 days. They clearly know it's been an extreme issue for me and a huge priority, and I made that abundantly clear. But at the same time, I told them that I wanted the postings to be done correctly and that if it took a little bit more time to make sure that everything was appropriate, I'd prefer that rather than to have improper postings or have to make corrections during the audit process. I, I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure that things are reported properly. But I have emphasized to them that this is creating issues for us on a citywide basis and needs to be their ultimate priority.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cardello?
Mr. Chairman, if Ms. Giant, our CFO, is comfortable with referring this back to sponsor and just keep an eye on it, and if it starts to get too close to the time where she needs to close her books, we can always put it back on the calendar, then I have no, no problem with agreeing with Mr. Abuzey to refer it back to sponsor. Thank you.
Just to point out from the chair, there is no motion to refer it back to sponsor at this time.
The way he had meant it, so I just want to get clarification from the new.
No, and I understand what Mr. Abuzey say and, you know, your concurrence, but, you know, there is, the only motion right now is favorable action. So we can have multiple motions. Ms. Lambert?
And just a question for Ms. Giant. Ms. Giant, how will this impact, you know, obviously the end of fiscal year? Is it, is it more of a process on how we close the books? Or how we're addressing them, if you could just clarify?
Sure, so this, this has the most impact on, on our federal grants because, and the 60-day timeline is something Mr. Demus and I can work on too because we have to file our final financial reports for federal grants. For any grant that ends June 30th, we have 60 days after that date to file our report. So we would need all the revenue in so we can reconcile the grants before we submit that. If we don't have it reconciled by the time we file our final report, that's when it becomes a Department of Education issue because it's a cash management problem. With the revenue needed in order to close the books for this year, the one that we are waiting on is just the last revenue that needs to get posted to the, the Devon's account because we've been utilizing those funds for, for the end of year, for this year. But the others, yeah, we are, we should be fine if we have a timeline in place to have all of this reconciled within the next 60 days, with the exception of the Devon's.
Okay, any, any questions of the person? If I can from the chair. Mr. Demus, you described that, you know, there's an existing process that you use. Is there like a written document with its job or instructions or standing operating procedures that you can share with Ms. Giant? So she knows what the process is, what the expectations are, who does what by when, and, 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 you know, anticipated timelines? Because I think a document like that would probably suffice the request itself.
Certainly, we can provide that. And I, I, I do work as a supporting role for all departments, including the schools, and have been communicating frequently, maybe not the last few weeks with, with Ms. Giant, but we actually do communicate on, on all of these issues.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's my final question, and only question. Okay, so there's only one motion before us, and that's a favorable action on the piece.
I'll make a motion to refer back to sponsor.
Okay, so the motion is made, and there's a motion made and seconded to refer back to sponsor. There's two motions on the floor, refer back to sponsor, for favorable action. Refer back to sponsor takes precedent, so that's the first vote we'll take. So roll call vote on referring back to sponsor.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No. So we have 90, I'm sorry, 70 affirmative, 20 negative. You have referred item 7 back to sponsor. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number eight is a request to dispose of the following technology equipment: 421 Chromebooks, one iPad, 12 Dell laptops, 15 Mac desktops, four CPUs, nine monitors, five projectors, and five telephones. There are 473 pieces of equipment in total. All of these pieces of equipment have been deemed obsolete by our technicians or not in working condition, and they're not even in condition to donate to any other groups.
I'll make a motion for favorable action to dispose of the list that she provided.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to dispose of the, the items as presented. Any, I do see. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a question, because I know that there are recycling programs, and with the electronics especially. Is there a way we can look into ways to recycle rather than just dispose?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
I'm wondering if these items will be replaced or have been replaced? Like the items that we're disposing are not working?
Absolutely, yes. So we've made a significant investment in Chromebooks this year. So these are the ones that were older or not working. And we do have in place plans to continue these investments as we know we need to constantly be turning over our technology. So we do have plans, not just for the Chromebooks, but for the other items as well to make sure that we either have those items or we have the most updated version of the technology that we need. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So just, just to turn dispose, and there's, it's not just for them, you know, throw them out in the trash. Sometimes you put these out to bid. There are electronics recycling companies that will actually possibly bid on 421 Chromebooks. They'll take the Chromebook, they'll strip it of precious metals like gold, probably take out the CPU. If everybody's been following the news, you can't, you know, there's lead times on cars because there's a worldwide shortage on microcontrollers and microprocessors, and that's why the company I'm working for is at 101% of plan. So just thought I'd put my electronics knowledge on to use. So with that, knowing key is, can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, attending affirmative, you have approved as requested. Next item, please.
Thank you. The final item, number nine, is a request to seek an RFP for the following network infrastructure and day-to-day IT help desk request. So we actually currently have an RFP for these two items collectively. And what we are requesting is to break them into two different RFPs with the hope of building internal capacity for the second, which is the day-to-day IT help desk request. So for the network infrastructure, we're requesting to go out for proposals to manage our network infrastructure. This would include our security networks, which is firewall, VPNs, Wi-Fi network, network servers, e-rate projects, et cetera. So this is a service that tends to be outsourced, especially in order to protect the district from any liability. The second item, which is the day-to-day IT help desk request, we are requesting to go out for proposals to manage our day-to-day IT help desk infrastructure. However, this is just a backup plan as we are working to increase internal capacity when the ever, within the Everett Public Schools.
Make a motion for favorable action?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Any questions? Superintendent, Mrs. Murray?
Can you say a little bit more about how the day-to-day IT help desk is going to look once COVID is over and we're resuming a more normal school year next year?
It will look very similar as it does now. We have had to increase the amount of support that we're providing through our Northeast Technology Partnership. So our plan is going to look very similar, but what we are attempting to do is we do have postings up for technology managers so that we can actually, instead of using Northeast Technology technicians, have our own in-house technicians that support us with this internal help. The, again, we've actually tried to, to post for these positions this, this previous year, but it is very difficult for us to, again, everybody's looking for positions such as these. We are very appreciative to the work that Northeast does to support us in this. But if we could long-term be able to build internal capacity or hire those who could do it for us, you know, obviously considering the direction we're all moving in school districts to be more 21st century, that would certainly behoove us to make sure that we always have our own internal capacity to support, you know, our IT tech.
Is this help desk going to be available to families as well or just staff and the school system?
It is mostly available to staff and the school systems. So it is, we do have support for our, our families, but that really comes from actually our, our schools themselves. We're either replacing Chromebooks, and then they bring them in, and then Northeast Technology takes a look at them. Or we do have classes for families, webinars for families. But for the actual tech support, instead of providing the tech support at the home, we generally just trade out the, the device and then fix it in-house.
Thank you.
Okay, and so no other requests to be recognized? Can I have, and we have a motion for favorable action that's been seconded. Can we roll call vote, please, on number nine?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, attending affirmative, zero and negative. You approve the request to go for RFP for the items as mentioned. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral six are the items submitted by school committee members. Item number one is a request for an update on the FY '21 budget management by the Everett Public Schools, including the expenditure reclassification of special education teacher salaries to the Devon's Fund in the amount of approximately $1 million, and the new plan for spending that amount from the EPS operating budget, and this was submitted by Mayor D. Maria.
Mayor D. Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the superintendent can answer that for me?
Absolutely. So, you know, we have been utilizing the Devon's School revolving funds in order to pay for Devon's expenses such as salary, supplies, et cetera. I do think that there has been some level of confusion around the purpose of revolving accounts, or perhaps it was just not being utilized like this in the past. But I, I do remember as I've entered into the district, I've heard many times in the district that, you know, comments that we could defer to our revolving accounts in the case of shortfalls in other areas. But in reality, revolving funds are not meant to be carried forward from year to year, nor are they meant to sort of plug holes in, in other areas when there is a budget deficit. So they are supposed to be used to pay for expenses related to the program from which the revenues were brought in in the first place and on a regular basis. I think it is important to note for the school committee that these are funds that can be swept at the end of any school year. And while that has never happened before, I do think again, as we build our, our school committee capacity on understanding these different budget lines and how they can be utilized, that that is an important thing to know as it is our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're using student funds on students. And so we have, when we asked earlier this year or didn't ask for anything over net school spending for this current year, our plan was always to leverage the funds that we had in our current budget in order to pay for all expenses related to our schools. Because again, as I've mentioned in the past, there were some areas where I did believe that we could build further efficiencies, where we could leverage our funds more effectively than we have in the past, and this area is one of them. We are using the, then, in doing so, that has freed up money in our other, in our budget itself. And we are using these funds for expenses that were not necessarily budgeted at the beginning of the year, but were part of the budget investment plan that the school committee approved in January. So as I mentioned before, I think that we always need to be strategic about how we are spending our funds, which is why it's important to have a budget investment plan at the ready in the case that you do have savings anywhere so that you can utilize those funds immediately in an area that is appropriate and that has been, again, approved by this body. So for example, that money has gone for COVID liaisons for pool testing, April Acceleration Academies, in addition to other academic academies, additional tutoring services at every school, additional Chromebook and tech needs, much-needed repairs that are not actually considered capital repairs, such as the science room updates at the Lafayette that we're making in order to convert a much- a much-needed classroom. So it's a current lab space into a classroom, given our space constraints. So those are the areas that we have been utilizing, the funds that have been freed up by actually leveraging the Devens revolving fund.
Can we get a, a copy of the million dollars that's been freed up and how exactly it's all being spent?
So you should have received a burn report update today, which shows you what different funds are?
I see that. I just, I, I just, I really can't read it, which is.
Well.
So, so you have the whole million dollars spread out, spread out here on the burn rate? Do you have the whole million dollars?
So it would be under, so for example, you know, the April Academies would be under instructional services.
So maybe a question, so was, was this million dollars part of the $9 million additional funds that you, you were looking for this year? It's part of your investment plan? So did you reduce that now by a million? So now would the shortfall be like, say, 8 million?
No.
Or did you find new expenses outside of the investment plan?
So if you remember, the budget investment plan had two different areas. There were the areas that were really kind of required, such as COVID liaisons who do the pool testing, you know, additional staff in order to support some of the, you know, the, the COVID emergency work that we've been doing. So that, so that budget investment plan was broken into those two areas. So yes, it paid for those items this year. What we were asking for was 9 million for next year to continue those expenses. So as you may have heard, we do have to, you know, eliminate our COVID liaisons at this point in time, unfortunately. We will reassess the need again in the fall. But the money that we're spending for this year is for these expenses that were not anticipated at the beginning of the year, but they're also not for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, to the, for you, to the superintendent. When you say they could sweep it at the end of a year, does that mean that we would have to give that money back to the city from that revolving account if it wasn't utilized?
That is correct. That has never been done here before, but I do think it's important for our school committee to know which funds of ours need to be leveraged in the immediate year and which need to be, which can be leveraged in the future. Sure. And again, if we don't have an MOA or something to the effect that those would be kept with us, then I do want the school.
Should we have an MOA that says we can keep rolling those funds over? So I know we have with other revolving accounts.
So I don't know if we have an MOA about those. I mean, I think we have past precedent. We do have MOAs about chargebacks and things like that, and there are certain revolving accounts, accounts where it wouldn't necessarily be able to be swept back. So an example would be the cafeteria services revolving account, for example, since that goes immediately towards like the, the meals that we have, future meals. So I mean, we absolutely would be willing to, I, I don't, I don't think it ever hurts to articulate processes and protocols, so that's certainly something we would be open to working with the city on.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea because I always consider that sort of a rainy day fund. So if, you know, a bread maker should break down and we need to replace it, we don't have to look for the money elsewhere. It would be right in the cafeteria revolving account. So I, I definitely think that's something going forward that we should have in writing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to clarify, just expanding on Ms. Cardello's point. So just like the cafeteria revolving account could go to, say, resolving a dishwasher breaking with the cafeteria, Devens should go towards instructional service toward the Devens and that student population?
Yes, that is the most appropriate way to be utilizing your revolving funds. Kind of like student activity accounts, it's supposed to be going towards the student activity that it came in for. So yes.
Right, so I, I'm, I wouldn't call it a rainy day fund. I wouldn't, you know, just to clarify that it's, we're not kind of holding it back, that it should be utilized and used for those purposes. Of course, there are situations, you know, especially in the cafeteria where that may be different, but strategic use of those revolving funds should be towards the, the student population that the revenues are.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. That is what I'm, I, I was meaning to say is that, that I think that when I first arrived, that may have been a misconception, which is why I wanted to clarify that. Because the revolving accounts really are supposed to be expended on these expenses. They aren't necessarily supposed to be. And I know that I had heard in the past some referrals to, well, you know, in the case that happens, you could go to the revolving account, when really that's not, it's not meant to be a backup for anybody holes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, and regarding revolving accounts, you know, using the cafeteria as an example. At one point, and the revolving accounts are part of the DESE audit. One of the findings they came back was that you have too much money in the cafeteria account and you have to spend it down. So besides, you know, utilizing the money, say, within that year, you know, they only recommend to carry over so much money into the following year. So just to add some tribal knowledge there. Thank you. I got Mayor Di Maria, and I'm sorry. I'll, I'll take Ms. Cardello, because she didn't yield, and then Mr. Mayor after her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we were very fortunate. We had that money in there because we did put it to good use from the cafeteria fund just a few years ago. So we were able to spend that down. But I'm just confused because I always thought the revolving account just stuck with that specific thing, like the Devens and every revolving account we had, that's only to be utilized for that. And I had never, in all these years, been made aware of the fact that that money could be taken from the school department if in fact we didn't utilize it. And I know that they like to keep just a certain amount in there. But has that ever happened that you can recall in looking back?
Well, I wasn't here, but no, I, I did ask and I was told that that has never happened.
Does never happen. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Okay, Mayor Di Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the city cannot sweep revolving accounts from the school department. So, but I will review this new $1 million plan. I'll have to blow it up. My eyes, I can't, can't really see it, but I'm hoping it's all mostly on instructional and, but thank you. But we cannot sweep those accounts.
Okay. Any other questions on the matter? There's no motion before us. I entertain a motion.
Chairman, you can refer this one back to the sponsor, please.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made, second to refer this matter back to sponsor. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten affirmative, you refer back to sponsor. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number two is a request for an update on EPS hiring of system-wide substitute teachers, including the number of substitutes hired against the projected need proposed in FY21 budget and projected expenditures for substitutes for the remainder of FY21. And this was submitted by Mayor Di Maria.
Oh, sorry. If, if the, I mean, superintendent can answer that question, that'd be great.
Absolutely. So the district had initially budgeted for 32 substitutes at a cost of 1.6 million, 1,670,668. At this time, we have a total of 30 substitutes with a cost to the district of approximately $620,000 for this school year. So that is both current and projected for the rest of the year. The lower actual expenditure is based on the fact that we did not require as many substitutes when we were in full remote instruction. The savings from this line have also been utilized for unanticipated costs throughout the year. If you specifically look at the burn rate report, you will see that there were unanticipated costs in special education tuition, tutoring services for students, but specifically in the special education tuition.
So the entire $400,000 is being spent in this fiscal year for unforeseen expenses that you didn't see in the budget this year?
So it's actually 1 million. And yes, so if you look at the burn rate report in front of you, you'll see that even there were $2 million worth of special education. Again, those are tuitions that go to our out-of-district that can't necessarily be projected year to year. So I mean, if you were, again, it's not always a line-to-line transfer because again, you're having deficits in some lines, as I'm sure you know, and then, then surpluses in other lines to, to balance it off. But for example, if you look at that, you'll see 2 million dollars just there, which could easily account for the 1 million saved in the Devens as well as the 1 million for substitute teachers.
Yeah, no, I, I knew it was 1 million, but you said you spent, you spent 600,000. So I was just doing quick math. It was 400,000 left over, right?
Oh, no, sorry. I said 1.6 million is what we had originally allocated. Yes, and we spent 600,000.
Oh, so you had an additional million of unforeseen expenses that are laid out in this burn rate on June 4th? Is that right? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, that is correct. So as I mentioned, for example, if you look at that burn rate report, you'll see that there was even an additional $2 million of expenses. So normally, these would be expenses that we would cover, you know, had, you know, if we received money above net. But again, our whole purpose for this year was to make sure that we leveraged our own funds for any unanticipated costs so as not to have to come to the city to ask for further funds. And I think we've done a great job. I'm very actually proud of our, our team for being able to leverage every dollar with even unanticipated costs to the account of just 2 million dollars in one line. And that's just one of the costs. And again, we were in a year of COVID that I, I'm, I'm very pleased with the fact that we were able to make true on that, that initial request to not ask for any more dollars from the city. I was unsure. I think Ms. Murray at one point asked if we really thought we'd be able to do that. I wasn't quite sure at some points in time, but you know, I think it all worked out in the end as we were able to leverage the dollars that we have.
Yes, great to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If I can from the chair, I just think, you know, unanticipated $2 million in spied tuition is probably not out of the norm. And that's why it was so important. We work collectively with the city council to approve that special education revolving account. So therefore, if we do have anything left over, we can then start to fund that tuition. So next year, when these things happen, we're in a better position. I know when, especially when it comes from another district, that district does pay some of the costs as far as the transition, but, but if we've got kids internally that start at the Bavarian and then have to be sent out of district, there's an example for you of unexpected tuition costs in sped. You know, these, these tuitions go from $45,000 a year plus tuition, plus transportation upwards to 100,000, quarter of a million dollars. So it's depending on, you know, the need of the student. So, I'm sorry, do we have a motion before us?
You can refer that back to sponsor, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made, second to refer it back to sponsor. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Ten affirmative, zero and the negative. So we have refer back to sponsor. Could I next item, please?
Thank you. Item number three is a request for an update on summer programming and outreach that was submitted by Ms. Lambert. And we did, I wanted to thank Ms. Lambert for submitting that. That was actually the impetus for providing the update in the superintendent's update regarding our summer school programming, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, and I, I do have one other question. So as we know, some families opted out of, say, kindergarten for their students because remote just wasn't the right option for maybe younger students. And some families did choose to have alternative schooling outside of our district, but always planned on coming back once we were in person. Will these opportunities be available to them once they register?
Yes, actually, we are in the process of, of looking into the, you know, all of the different aspects of this, but we are planning to have these options not only open for those students who homeschool, but also for those students who may have transferred to a different school. We're even looking into the, the possibility of whether or not we can provide them to any Everett student.
Excellent, thank you. And I just want to reiterate, any way we can push out the information, I know we do a lot of social media texting, but email, especially now as people have kind of gotten back into working outside of the home and, you know, some of the busyness of our lives has come back. And just think, any way we can push out information in as many accessible, whether language or whatnot, is important. So thank you. And with that, I'll refer back to sponsor.
Yeah. Okay, any, any questions? Seeing none, can we roll call vote for this matter back to sponsor?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten affirmative, you refer back to sponsor. Next item, please?
Yes, Roman numeral seven are the subcommittee reports. We have one subcommittee report on finance and negotiations, which met on May 20th at 6:30 PM.
Mrs. Lambert, please raise your hand.
The Subcommittee of Finance and Negotiations met to discuss, to meet in executive session to discuss the power contract on May 20th, and that report will follow.
Okay, so with, so there's no report to accept at this point. We'll just, I entertain a motion to lay it on the table to our next meeting.
Second, so moved.
Okay, motion made, seconded to lay this. I am on to our next meeting. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten in front of you laid this item on the table. I believe next is bills and payrolls. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of 2,340,855.86. I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of 2,340,855.86. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten affirmative, you have approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of 2,340,855.86.
Second motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yep.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten affirmative, you have approved to pay bills and payrolls in set amount. Next item on the calendar? I don't believe there is anything else?
Make a motion to, Sharon, with a happy birthday to Ms. Murray?
Happy birthday, Ms. Murray.
Can we sing?
You stop.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Murray. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Murray.
Thank you. That would have been a great submission in the town show last week, just saying.
Okay.
Oh, and we have cake. Oh, there you go.
Okay, Mr. Lesten, after you deliver, can you please call the roll for adjournment, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Absolutely.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni? Mr. Parker?
Yes, before I call the vote, just a reminder that we have the budget hearing tomorrow live and in person, 6 P M. at the city council on chamber tomorrow night. So ten affirmative, you have ruled for adjournment. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.